All right, we're ready. All right, we're ready. All right, we are doing a streaming test for the board's January 3rd, 2022 meeting. All right, we are doing a streaming test for the board's January 3rd, 2022 meeting. Today, the board is going to talk about a couple of open space acquisitions, Today, the board is going to talk about a couple of open space acquisitions, do a whole bunch of appointments, do a whole bunch of appointments, look, talk about an affordable housing project, look, talk about an affordable housing project, consider a change to the UDO, consider a change to the UDO, and other issues. and other issues.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Wake County Board of Commissioners meeting for January 3rd, 2022, the first meeting of our new year. As always, the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. This will be followed by the invocation from Commissioner Maria Cervanha.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chair Hutchinson, and the rest of the board. Now, will you pause to join us in this invocation as you see fit? As we start 2022 anew, help us to be generous in prosperity and thankful in adversity. Help us to be kind to each other, to be fair in judgment, and to bear fruit upon the tree of humility. Help us remember that kindness starts in our hearts but requires an action towards another, an action that we do not expect something in return. So Almighty, we reach for the garments of grace, compassion, kindness, humility, gentleness, and patience. We trust you for strength to extend to others the same loving kindness you've poured upon us richly, and as we bring our grateful hearts to you, in your loving name, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cervanha, we appreciate that. Before we dive into our business today, I think that my colleagues join me in a word of thanks to our staff in light of what's happened. We're so glad everyone's here, we're so glad everyone's safe, and we hope that you had a positive holidays, but we know something happened on the way to the holiday break called Omicron, and I think that it caught us all significantly off guard. You know, normally, we like to see our positivity rate on our testing at around 5%. Currently, it's at 16%, and at one time over the holidays, it was up to 22%. We collectively were caught completely off guard by the rise of the infection rate, but it's very important for citizens to realize that the public health department stepped up and met the demand out there for testing, whereas we were scheduled for 7,000 tests a day. As a result of our staff, we were able to double that, and up to 13,000 tests every day, which means that we've had over 90,000 tests done over five sites that is just controlled by Wake County over a two-week period of time. And let's just remember that these tests are free. I happened to go down to Florida over the holidays, and they don't have any free testing. They don't even have any testing. So the fact that we are offering these tests to our citizens to keep us safe and our families safe, I think is very significant. In addition to that, we worked with the state to provide testing at the PNC Arena, in Five County Stadium, and the Word of God Fellowship, and we will continue these tests through the end of the month and possibly beyond that. We also want to thank the local pharmacies, the urgent cares, the doctor's offices, and all of those who helped us through this surge. But more than anything, the public health team, the emergency management staff, the communications team, and the county leadership truly deserve thanks for working over the holidays to keep all of us safe from this Omicron. So let's give them a round of applause for everything that they've done to keep us safe. Thank you. And please, get tested and to get vaccinated and keep yourself safe and wear your mask. All right, that being said, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move approval.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Passage unanimously, move on to the minutes of the regular meeting, December 6, 2021. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Been moved and properly seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose no, passage unanimously. Members, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and can be enacted by one motion. If a commissioner requests that item be pulled from the agenda and discussed in full, we can surely do that after the consent agenda is approved. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose no, passage unanimously. All right, we will move on then to the regular agenda, and we will have our public comment at half past 5:00, 5:30, which is the normal tradition that we do here on the Ethic Commission. The first item on the regular agenda is the presentation of the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending in June 30th, 2021. Mr. Flannery, welcome, sir.
All right, thank you very much, and good evening, Commissioners. I'm excited to be before you today to present an overview of the county's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. An electronic copy of the report was sent to you last week. We've delivered a hard copy to you today, and this report will be posted to the county's website this week. I would first like to start by thanking the entire finance department staff for their work on this year's financial reports. This report is a direct result of their hard work and dedication throughout the year. I would also like to thank staff at Health and Human Services, the Sheriff's Office, the County Attorney's Office, Information Services, along with Elliot Davis' team for their assistance during the audit process. Next slide, please. All right, little background for today's presentation. The North Carolina general statutes require that the county have an audit of its financial statements annually by external auditors. In addition, the county is required to have an audit for certain federal and state grant programs and our internal controls over financial reporting. The audit firm of Elliot Davis completed the financial statement audit for the county for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. I will share the operating results and financial position for the fiscal year 2021, and then Jamie Crampton, manager at Elliot Davis, will share the results of the audit engagement. Next slide, please. This table provides a summary of revenues across all county funds. The second column provides the primary source of revenue, and the last two columns show actual revenues for the past two fiscal years. The general fund accounts for most county activities, while the debt service fund accounts for all county issued debt. These are the funds by which most of the county's financial policies, guidelines, and metrics are measured to gauge long-term fiscal health. The county has 10 special revenue funds used to account for activities primarily funded by grants or restricted revenue sources. The county also has six capital project funds that account for capital programs of the county and other capital programs the county has a responsibility to fund. Finally, the county has three proprietary funds, which are business activities offset by charges for services. Revenues for all funds for fiscal year 2021 totaled $2.71 billion compared to $2.44 billion in the prior fiscal year, an increase of approximately $270 million. Some key differences between fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 2020 include the county recognized $159.5 million in CARES Act funding in fiscal year 2021. The county received about $67 million more in sales tax due to the continued increase of sales even through COVID-19. The county transferred an additional amount of $63 million to fund one-time capital projects. The grants fund is nearly $20 million higher. The county received additional grant funding for COVID-19 from the federal and state government, which was accounted for in our grants fund. The county issued additional debt for Wake County Public Schools and Wake Tech. We'll spend the rest of the presentation focused on the general fund. More information about the other funds can be found in the Management Discussion and Analysis section of the annual comprehensive financial report. Next slide, please. All right, this chart provides an overview of the county's general fund revenues by source. The primary source of revenue for the general fund is the property tax at 73%. This is followed by the sales tax at 15%, and in all, tax revenues comprise 89% of all general fund revenues. Property tax revenues remain the major source of revenue that local governments can control through the adoption of a tax rate. The tax rate for fiscal year 2021 was 60 cents per $100 of assessed value. Of the total tax rate, 41.43 cents supports the general fund operations, while 18.57 cents was used to meet debt and capital needs. And just for reference, in fiscal 2020, the tax rate was 72.07 cents per $100 of assessed value, and property tax revenues represented 74% of general fund revenues. For sales tax revenues, the sales tax levy is set and collected by the state and remitted back to counties based on various distribution models primarily per capita. Intergovernmental revenues are comprised of various grant and reimbursements from other federal, state, and local governments. Charges for services are direct charges to customers based either on cost recovery for the services rendered or statutorily set fees. Next slide, please. In the general fund, actual property tax revenues increased to $1.13 billion in fiscal year 2021. This is up from, yeah, up from $1.1 billion in fiscal 2020, an increase of almost $33 million. I want to thank Tax Administration Director Marcus Kinraid and the Tax Administration staff for their work billing and collecting the county's primary revenue source. As you can see on this slide, the collection rate for fiscal 2021 remained incredibly strong at 99.88%, and this was up from 99.8% in fiscal '20. The county's portion of actual sales tax distribution increased to $239.7 million in fiscal 2021 from $209.3 million in fiscal year 2020, and this is a $30 million increase. Other taxes, which is primarily comprised of real estate, property transfer taxes, went from $20.7 million in fiscal year 2020 to $23.2 million in fiscal year 2021, an increase of approximately $2.5 million. As mentioned previously, the main driver of the other taxes increase was the real property transfer taxes, which ended the year 22% higher due to the continued robust residential growth in Wake County. Next slide, please. Continuing with general fund revenues, actual intergovernmental revenues increased slightly to $82.9 million fiscal year 2021 from $81.7 million in fiscal year 2020. The county received $9.5 million more in intergovernmental revenues than budgeted. Most of this can be attributed to the $7 million of excess revenues received from the ABC Commission at the end of the fiscal year, and approximately $2 million more in Medicaid reimbursements for administrative costs. The $7 million in excess ABC revenues was committed to fund balance. Under charges for services, the county recognized approximately $4.9 million more than budgeted. Construction permitting and real estate activity continued to be strong throughout the year, which contributed to revenue growth. The other revenue categories included the anticipated use of fund balance and the budgeted adoption; however, no unassigned fund balance was used. Overall, the general fund revenues totaled nearly $1.56 billion in fiscal year 2021, a 2.8% more than budgeted and an increase of $69 million over fiscal year 2020. Next slide, please. Moving on to expenditures, the chart on the left provides an overview of how the county uses its general fund resources. 37% of operating expenditures are for education, which represents the allocation of funding for Wake County Public School System and Wake Tech Community College operations. And out of this 37%, 35% is allocated to the public schools and 2% is to the Wake Tech. In addition to these allocations for operations, the county allocates funding to education through transfers of portions of property and sales tax revenues to capital projects and their associated debt service. Referring to the chart on the right, about 2/3 of the transfers, or 20% of total expenditures, go to debt service and capital project allocations for the schools and Wake Tech, bringing the total portion of expenditures allocable to education to 57%. So out of the 29% of the transfers to other funds, 20% of that goes to education. The next largest category of expenditures are Health and Human Services, which includes housing and behavioral health at 12%, followed by public safety, which includes EMS, the sheriff's office, detention, CCBI, fire services, and emergency management at 10% of expenditures. Next slide, please. This chart outlines budget to actual expenditures by function for the fiscal year. For fiscal year 2021, actual expenditures totaled $1.48 billion, or 97.5% of the total budget, that is slightly more than $1.5 billion. Actual expenditures for the fiscal year 2021 were approximately $37.9 million below budgeted amounts. Operating expenditures continued to be lower than budget, as expenditures for salaries and supplies for COVID-19-related operations were diverted to the county's federal COVID-19 funding. In-person business travel was restricted, and positions remain vacant across the county. Next slide, please. And to note some specific areas where the county recognized savings, the county's self-insured health and dental plans were under budget by approximately $2.8 million due to additional budgeted reserves. This will be committed to be used for insurance claims in future years. Health and Human Services recognized budget savings from service-level changes and their willingness to divert staff resources to the COVID-19 response, which meant some payroll costs were redirected to the CARES Act funding. The departments also had key vacancies throughout the year. Related to behavioral health, the county recognized contract savings through alliances, utilization of state funding, and delays in pilot programs. These savings will be committed to expenses in future years to continue to meet the ongoing needs of the community. Finally, public safety departments recognized savings in fiscal year 2021 due to a combination of staffing vacancies and the sheriff's office salaries that were redirected to the county's coronavirus relief funding. Next slide, please. For fiscal year 2021, total revenues for the general fund exceeded total expenditures by $80.8 million, increasing total general fund balance from $401.1 million to $481.9 million. Again, the main reasons for the increase include the sales tax revenues and other taxes received were higher than budgeted, as there was minimal impacts to revenue due to COVID-19, significant excess ABC revenues, which were committed to fund balance, significant savings in the behavioral health contracted services, which were also committed to fund balance, and then savings in the county's health insurance costs, which were reserved for future health insurance costs, and then savings in operational costs due to COVID-19 and the ability to divert certain expenses to the CARES Act funding. Next slide, please. The county continues to meet the fund balance requirements set by the Board of Commissioners. For fiscal year 2021, total combined fund balance of the general fund and debt service fund equaled 41.4% of revenues. Our policy requirement is a minimum of 30%. This enables us to keep our AAA rating among all three rating agencies. Next slide, please. While the county's fund balance policies calculate metrics based on total fund balance amounts, the county commits certain amounts of fund balance to certain projects or programs. When the county considers funding, fund balance in its long-term financial planning, these committed amounts are not factored as being truly available to meet ongoing operating capital and debt obligations. This chart provides a comparison of general fund balance for fiscal years '21 and fiscal years 2020. My focus will be on the committed four section. First, the county sets aside and uses funds to complete the four-year property reevaluation cycle. This helps offset fluctuations in the tax administration's budget related to these activities. Second, the county is required by North Carolina general statutes to provide a separation allowance benefit for retired sworn law enforcement officers and commit funds to support those annual payments. Third, the county sets aside excess ABC proceeds to be used for a variety of one-time future projects and investments, particularly focused on substance abuse in human services. Fourth, the county sets aside savings resulting from its behavioral health contracts to be used for future one-time investments and pilot projects within the same type of services. And lastly, the county sets aside savings resulting from insurance claims to be used to offset future claims and cost increases. Next slide, please. All right, just to recap all of this, the county ends fiscal 2021 in a solid financial position due to better-than-anticipated sales tax revenues and federal funding. Positive variances in general fund revenues and expenditures for fiscal 2021 will provide a cushion against future economic uncertainty. COVID-19 is ever-evolving, and the county will continue to monitor the impacts on service delivery and costs, general funds revenues driven by consumers and development, and long-term capital planning. And we will present recommendations at the January 10th work session for one-time uses on appropriate portion of the $80.8 million fund balance increase. Next slide, please. And now to finalize our audit with the LGC. Per recent changes in the North Carolina Administrative Code, the LGC is requiring auditors to note any financial performance indicators of concern when filing the annual audit to the state. This requires a response letter that is signed by our Board of Commissioners. Per the new LGC metrics, we had two minor items. Our audit was late due to our auditors experiencing severe staffing Our audit was late due to our auditors experiencing severe staffing shortages, which is kind of on par with the national labor shortage right now that's being felt very hard, particularly in the finance sector, and the large amount of additional testing that was required this year from the federal COVID funds. The second item was the timing of the government, governmental accounting standards board, new accounting standards, or accounting rules, excuse me, with statement number eighty-four, fiduciary activities. Two funds no longer met the new definition of fiduciary activity according to statement number eighty-four. Therefore, we were, they were converted to special revenue funds. Fiduciarity funds do not have adopted budgets, and since the transition to special revenue funds was made mid-year after budget adoption, a corresponding budget was not in place. Both funds have adopted budgets in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, and this is no longer an issue. We will circulate the response letter for your signature this week. Next slide, please. All right, and finally, I would like to mention that the annual comprehensive financial report is submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association of the U.S. and Canada for consideration of their Achievement of Excellence for Financial Reporting Award. The county received this award for the last year's report, marking the thirty-seventh consecutive year the county has received this recognition. Finance staff is available to answer any questions you may have as you read through the financial reports or want additional information about the county's financial policies and guidelines. Before I turn it over to Jamie Crampton of Elliott Davis, do you have any questions of us?
Questions, Commissioners? Yes. Commissioner Claver.
Thank you very much. This is really helpful. I appreciate you walking through all this with us. On what is to me slide twelve, but it's the fund balance comparison, just a couple of, maybe three slides back.
Yep.
There we go. I noticed that in the committed four category, we saw future insurance claims that went up from twenty-five hundred and change, or two point five million, or thereabouts, to about five point three million. Can you tell us a little bit about why that jumped up in the way that it did? Did we have excess revenues? And was that a discretionary decision that was made to put away additional funds while we can? What was the, the reason for that?
There was two main factors.
Yeah.
One was there was fund balance assigned to that this year that was not used, or this past year, excuse me. And also, there was lower claim costs throughout the year. If you remember the period from about March to September of twenty twenty, most dental and health practices were shut down, and so there just wasn't as much usage as there normally is. And that is committed to future costs.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Yes.
Thank you so much for your presentation and all the hard work that the financial department and our partners at Elliott Davis. A couple of questions. You had mentioned the, the strain on, on workplace, that you all did not have enough people. And is that still a constraint in terms of the financial division?
As far as hiring in the shortage, yeah, it's a major concern in the finance sector right now. We're not, we've actually gotten almost fully staffed right now. It's an extreme struggle to try to hire people right now, and the salaries have escalated significantly, and the pool of candidates is extremely small. And the quality is just not what it's been in the past. It's, we're seeing it across not just government but private, because I've had conversations with private businesses, and I've had conversations with other local governments, and everybody is struggling with the same issue. I talked to the city of Raleigh, and I think they have ten open positions in their finance department right now, which is more than we have.
So I want to, oh.
No, go ahead, sorry.
Goodness. And so I want to bring it back to this reporting and to the future. Is there a penalty that we are late in our audit? And also, how are we preparing it to where we don't have this lateness in the future?
The only penalty, there's no real penalty. The response letter that we have been given by the LGC is what we need to respond to with corrective actions. Yes, we will be working very closely with the auditors next year to hopefully keep things on track. It was a little bit out of our control. Everybody was just kind of hit very quickly with this severe shortage of workers. And the other big factor is just the incredible amount of work that's coming with all the federal money, because all of that has to be reviewed as well, and there's just a lot more of it. And so there was a lot more testing that has to go through the audit process. So it just takes longer. So it's kind of those two factors. But yeah, we're going to work very closely this next year to make sure it's on time.
Thank you.
Dr. West.
Yes. Commissioner Savanas mentioned the federal dollars, and I guess I would say this is kind of a blip. It doesn't happen all the time. So as we look at our finances and we look at the auditing, which appears to be very sound and effective, how did the federal dollars affect how we, I guess, conducted our audit? Was it totally separate, or was there interface between the dollars that were coming in from the federal level?
Well, the, the federal money kind of has diverted some of our normal spending. So especially for health and human services, their staff that is normally paid from general fund, they're now working directly on COVID operations.
Oh.
And so that money then is being expended on the federal money. So we're actually seeing savings on the general fund side because of those funds. Yeah, it is a unusual situation, but we do have a four-year, whatever we, so that funding, at least for the new ARPA funding that's just been received, that funding has an end date of spend date of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So we still have another five years of that funding to spend. I don't, so it's, it is a blip, but it's kind of a, you know, multi-year blip here at this point.
In other words, even though we have those dollars come in over a period of time, that they have been reconciled in our whole process of looking at truly where we are in terms of our budget.
Yeah, all that money is accepted, appropriated, and budgeted for. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
We actually hired a new position that tracks this money exclusively.
Thank you, Dr. West. Yes. Commissioner Savanas, Dr. Sherr.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the information. I just have a quick question about the health insurance. So the health insurance is under budget by two point eight million, and I know we said that that was due to claims. So if that money can be used for future claims, but I'm also thinking about like inflation. So is that also an opportunity to use that for plan and plan providers, like plan costs as well, thinking about what our health insurance could cost us in the future? Or is that only for claims?
Well, it's to, yeah, if there was like a surge of claims, it would help to offset that, but it's also to help mitigate the cost of the plan to employees.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, Commissioners, this is informational item only. There's no vote, so unless there's objections or other questions, we'll move on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Jamie Crampton from Elliott Davis.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for having me tonight. Just wanted to start off by saying, you know, to Commissioner West's point, the federal dollars this year on the financial statements, the total expenditures of federal dollars were two hundred and sixty million dollars. And so in two thousand nineteen, that number was seventy-two million. So you can, you can imagine the amount of money and the stress that that puts on a, a single audit that is based on those dollars and, and identifying. So the, the CARES Act funding, the COVID relief funds, and the, the ARPA funds are going to, you know, cause a, an increase in testing for, for the next several years, I, I would imagine. So tonight I have three primary topics that I want to cover. First will be the required communications between auditor and commissioners. Then I will go through the audit reports, and I will wrap up with a couple of findings. So I'll start with the required communications, and you guys receive a, a document that, that details these in, in finer detail, but just wanted to touch on each of these so that you know what you're looking for in this document. So the audit planning process, our audit planning process puts an emphasis on how the county operates. Throughout the planning process, we develop an understanding of the internal controls that are in place throughout the county, and we, that helps us determine the nature extent, extent and timing of the audit we perform. During the process, we also determine a materiality threshold, and this helps us focus our audit on items that will have a material impact if misstated throughout the county. So general fund, obviously, you know, public safety, those kinds of things are, are larger departments than, than a smaller department, and I won't pick on any, any department in particular, but just, just kind of wanted to point that out. We're, we're required to take internal controls into count, when, into account when planning the audit, but we do not express an opinion on those internal controls. That, the, the effectiveness of internal controls stays primarily with, with management and the board. And the full detail of our responsibilities is in our engagement letter. Significant, significant accounting, significant accounting policies are detailed in note one of the financial statements you've been provided. The only change in these policies was the implementation of GASB eighty-four that Patrick mentioned, and that is not a required communication. I just wanted to point that out. In order for us to have to, you know, relay a change in accounting policy, it would have to be a significant as well as an unusual change, but I just wanted to point it out. It's not an unusual change, but I wanted to point it out. Management, like I said, retains the responsibility, or retains some responsibility throughout our engagement. They retain responsibility for judgments and accounting estimates. These are, for example, useful life of fixed assets as well as the pension and OPEB liability. Management employs an actuary who helps them with this, but it, they, they rely on that actuary to, to provide us with this information. Throughout the financial statements, the footnote disclosures all appear to be neutral, consistent, and clear. There were no audit adjustments as a result of our testing, and no unrecorded misstatements were discovered that rose to above a trivial amount. We have attained representation from management that all information provided was complete and accurate to the best of their knowledge, among other items that are detailed in the representation letter that is attached to your communication document. The next several items are things that if they occur, we would have to report them to you. In the case of the twenty twenty-one engagement, there were no disagreements with management, no consultation with other accountants, significant, no significant issues discussed with management other than what is reported in the findings or difficulties encountered during the engagement. There were no other formal written communications outside of the standard engagement letter, communication document, audit reports, and management representation letter. Audit results. So moving from the required communications into the audit reports, we will talk about three slides, but four audit reports. The first is the auditor's report on the financial statement. So it's our responsibility to express an opinion on whether the financial statements are materially in conformity with GAAP, which is generally accepted accounting principles. We obtain reasonable assurance regarding material misstatements, and should we determine fraud occurred, we would be required to report that to you. But our audit procedures are not specifically designed to detect fraud, and there was no fraud detected throughout our testing. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements and maintaining internal controls. The county received an unmodified or clean opinion for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Next is the report on internal controls and compliance over financial reporting. The county also receives a single audit due to those federal expenditures, and as part of this consideration is given to internal, internal controls over financial reporting. The goal is to gain an understanding and test these on a limited basis, but not express an opinion on the effectiveness of the controls. We are also required to consider compliance with requirements having a direct and material effect on the financial statements. But again, an opinion on compliance with laws and regulations is not an objective of this audit. There were no internal control deficiencies or noncompliance noted in regards to the financial report. Lastly, and this is actually contained in two reports in your ACF, is the report on compliance with major programs. One report is for the federal programs and one report is for the state programs. As part of the compliance audit, we are required to issue an opinion on compliance with both state and federal major programs. So that goes back to the overall funding total. We have a specific calculation we have to follow that identifies the programs that we test, both federal and state expenditures. We use several pieces of guidance to complete these procedures. Those are the generally accepted accounting, auditing standards, government auditing standards, as well as OMB's uniform guidance. Management is again responsible for all compliance and internal controls. The county complied in all material respects with major program requirements and received an unmodified opinion for both the state and federal reports with three deficiencies identified. Those findings are listed here. They're detailed in the compliance report you were provided, so I'll detail each one briefly, but I'm happy to answer any detailed questions you have. The Medicaid and SNAP programs, information entered into the Enterprise Program Integrity System, EPI, did not fully support claims that were entered into them. Medicaid income verifications and wage calculations were not fully documented and determined to be, were not fully documented, and for foster care, the, during the testing, it was determined that in, in some cases, the supervisor was completing a review before final needs verification was being completed. All of these are standard findings that we see at, at many counties across the state, and these are internal control findings, so these are not material compliance findings. What we do when we're testing, we, we find the items through our testing, and then we follow up with staff and we say, okay, well, you know, you don't have the documentation right now. Can you run, can you run a query or reach out to the, the recipient and verify this information now? And in all cases, DHHS was able to come back with information that provided that no, no, no ineligible benefits were received. So these are simply control findings. So with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Questions, Commissioners? Very good. It sounds like it's a very clean report.
Yes, very good, and we really appreciate, I, I won't try to list all the departments that Patrick listed that assist with the audit, but the, the entire county from the commissioners all the way down, we really appreciate the relationship and, and appreciate the opportunity to work with you.
Well, great. Well, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate that. I think just, once again, it just speaks to what a great finance department we have, and so we appreciate all the work of our department as well.
Thank you, guys.
So thank you. All right, Commissioners, any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Evans.
As an accountant and a recovering CPA, I would just like to thank our staff immensely. There's a lot, a lot, a lot of good work that goes on every day in our accounting and finance department to get us to this point, to get a clean opinion and an audit when you have as many employees and as many departments and billions of dollars of transactions. So, you know, it, it seems like just a regular old thing because we're used to getting a clean opinion, but I just wanted to acknowledge that it's a really big deal and, and that we have very few comments from the LGC. And so just wanted to commend our folks, and it's always extremely important to hear from the auditors that management worked with them very well, and there were no issues there, and so I want to acknowledge that as well. So thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. As a professional speaking, that really does mean a lot, I'm sure, to staff, so it's perfect. All right, any other comments? All right. Hearing none. Once again, this is informational only, and if there's no objection, we'll move on. All right, then we'll move on to the general public comment time. We love to hear from our public, and so we allow time in, in every one of our meetings to be able to hear from our public. You can come and sign up in advance. You can come and sign up in advance, and then we have an opportunity for you to speak. If you don't have a chance to sign up, we'll give you an opportunity to speak, and you can also make comments to this board that we read either online, or you can leave them in that box. Also, if you have comments that you would like to have on the record beyond what you just say publicly, there's a box right over here, and we ask that you just put your comments in that box right there. The process that we we use is that I have a list right here of the people who've signed up, so we'll go through that first, and then if there's anyone else who would like to speak, then we'll give you the opportunity to do that. Everyone is allowed three minutes to speak, and at that end, we have three little lights right up here on the podium. The green means that you have a full three minutes. When you have one minute left, the yellow light comes on, and then when your time is up, the red light comes on. So we treat everyone fairly. When the red light comes on, I will mention that your time is up, and if you could just finish your sentence, we would greatly appreciate it, so we can then move on and move through the comment period as expedient as possible. All right, the first person who has signed up is Mr. Olavaria. So, Mr. Sorry?
Olavaria.
Thank you, sir. Please come on down and speak. Thank you. We're welcome welcome you.
You said this the box?
Yes, right there is the box. If you want to put your comments after you make them, and then if you could, yes, if you could help him by pulling down the the microphone. Welcome, sir. If you could just state your name and the part of the county that you're from, that would be very helpful to us.
My name is Ronaldo Olavaria, and I am a resident of Wake County, and in particular the town of Wendell, North Carolina. Been in Wendell since 2004 and in Wake County since 2001. My I haven't been to these meetings. I try to stay home a lot, try to do things through email and stuff. So when I started coming out, I noted that I'm not sure if you guys ever thought about accessibility in terms of making sure that public forums like this are accessible to the hearing impaired, deaf and hearing impaired, and disabled in terms of translating and interpreters and so forth. I'm not sure. I haven't seen, you know, I've seen the meetings online, and you know how it is when Google or YouTube translates. Three screens later, you might see the actual text of what somebody may have said, and sixty percent of it might be wrong. So I'm just trying to figure out, will the county have a system wherein they have make this forum more accessible to the disabled and Hispanic members? You know, I haven't seen Spanish language translators, or even I looked online to see if any of your material is readily available with an easy click to see if it's in Spanish or whatever. So I'm trying to my my comment is, is that is the county ever going to think about more inclusive efforts to include the disabled and people of Hispanic origin? That's my I have written stuff also, which I put in the box, but I don't want to take too much of your time, and, you know, hopefully, there'll be some dialogue on it and some feedback later on. I'm not sure what your process is, but my comment is, is really, I'm looking forward to seeing more of an inclusive process wherein Wake County Board of Commission is able to engage two segments of its citizenry is residents. So that's about it.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your those comments and those concerns.
All right.
All right, the next item, Mr. Jim Walsh. Mr. Walsh, are you here? Great, thank you, sir.
I hope you all had a great Christmas and a wonderful New Year and spent all that time with family. So important. This is my third time here. Some of you might recognize me. The first time, I spoke about the problem we're seeing with the increase of suicide rates with children. That is still a very serious problem, and the attributes to why that's happening are very clear in my eyes, but I think I don't want to repeat that topic, but I think that's something that you need to keep in mind as you go forward with different policies and decisions. Last month, I came here regarding the books in our public schools and had a nice presentation, talked with you all, gave you some material. I hope you were able to review that material. We were very pleased that the Public Library removed the material from the shelves. Now, please understand, I am not banning books. These books have pornography in them. They are against North Carolina law and federal law of pornography. That is why we are asking these books to be removed from the shelves and managed appropriately. If these books have material in them that are breaking the law, then the law must be followed, and those that put these books in place must have the consequences of the law brought towards them. Okay? I think that's very serious. So the progress today is our claims that we filed with the the sheriff are sitting in DA's office. DA cannot move forward because of North Carolina law that passed to the school boards the right to make policies, and the policies are, they passed it down to the principals, and the principals have a policy that says the complaint must be filed with the principal, and then it goes to committee, and then it might come to the school board to take action. Excuse me, that's BS. All right? The law has been broken. Action needs to be taken, very simply. Now, the books, if they're age appropriate, they need to be in the schools. If they're not age appropriate, they need to be in the library and managed, just like tobacco is, just like alcohol is, it needs to be put in a place that is contained and can be managed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. The next individual is Mr. Chad Stahl. Mr. Stahl? Welcome, sir.
I stopped sitting so far away. Happy New Year. I realize we're down one Commissioner. I just want her to know that she's in our thoughts and hope she has a happy recovery. I'm here, I'm slightly distressed a little bit. I enjoyed the presentation about the budget. I think comparing 2020 to 2021 is a slight false sense of achievement. It would have been really great to see a 192021 comparison. I'm one of those small business owners that had to give up my business through 2020 because our government decided who was and who was not essential, and so I have a lot of debt with me that I'm carrying, that I'm still trying to work through and pay, and, you know, my wife and I, we have another business, but, you know, when the gentleman is talking about staffing, I hope that you guys are also weighing in the fact that we have a school system here that is just embellishing quarantining healthy kids, denying medically signed exemptions, religious exemptions, so those parents are taking those kids out of school. They're being homeschooled because they can't depend on the school system that we fund through our tax money. We can't depend on them to allow our children to attend. That's a problem. That's a huge, huge problem. So just maybe eliminating some of their autonomy and giving some of that autonomy back to the parents, I think the workforce would improve because then we would be able to depend on the system that we fund. And then I I saw an article at WRL about the wanting to increase the taxes to help cover the school systems' decision-making and their lack of fiscal responsibility. And the only problem I have with that is if our government is going to restrict me from working, if you're going to restrict the type of customers I can see or can't see based on their health decisions, based on their mass belief, whatever it is, if you're going to restrict me from being able to make money, I don't know why then you would want to continue to increase taxing me. I feel like it's a slight double-edged sword, and I'm happy, I think you guys are even wanting more money now. I'm okay with that. It's a ton of money. Wake County is huge. I'm sure you guys work really, really hard, so that's okay with me. But I would rather you make more money on the back of me making money than you making more money while you prevent me from making money. So I hope that you weigh those things out. I hope that our school system, someone will really address with them and stop taking their marching orders from special interest groups, their little union that they have that likes to kind of tell the board members, hey, this is how you need to vote, this is what you need to do. I think the union has a very special place, and it's to advocate for the betterment and the fair treatment of the staff of the school system. It is not there to enforce or to influence board members like yourselves or the school board members of policies that they write that prevent our children from going to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl. The next speaker is Michelle Morrow.
Thank you, and thank you for serving our county, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to speak again. I am one of the moms, I am a mom of five, as well as a nurse of 29 years, been living here in Wake County for the last seven, and I am very concerned about what has happened. I am thankful that we removed gender queer from the library, but there's a few things that I think maybe we should consider in order to protect our children. I think something that we need to recognize is all of us as parents, grandparents, aunts and uncles, we do a really, we try to do a really good job of having everyone that is in contact with our kids, whether it's a whether it's a teacher, a tutor, a nanny, a coach, you know, somebody that's with them at summer camp. We want them to have background checks, right? And I think we would all agree that the reason why we want these people to have background checks is because we want to know whether or not they're going to harm our children. And I think if we're honest, most of us are concerned about sexual abuse of our children. And so I think one of the things that, you know, come on the back of what Mr. Walsh had shared is these books that are in the library, many of them are depicting pedophilia acts, and I think with that, it I think we need to do maybe three things to try to protect our children. One of them is potentially every child that is under the age of 18 should potentially get a different library card so that they will not have access to certain books. I think what Mr. Walsh was saying in in terms of protecting things, having them be behind a closed door, where potentially, if it's an adult fiction book or whatever it might be, that you have to actually scan your card to go into the room if you wanted to see that, I think we definitely need to say that anything that is depicting even sex between children, because some of these books are just children in elementary school ages that are that are performing sex acts on one another. And I think we would all agree that even the money that is being spent in the schools, we are not seeing the educational proportion in terms of our kids' academic performance that is, you know, in line with that. So that's the second thing. And the third thing, I think, because kids from public school can get books out of the public libraries, that's one of the reasons why we're coming to you, because I think it really is important that they not kind of circumvent what's happening in the schools and go to the public libraries where there's not as many checks and balances. So I hope that you'll consider that in terms of protecting our children in the future. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Morrow. Is there anyone in this room who would like to speak, who has not been given the opportunity to speak? Okay, hearing none, then we'll close the public session, and just once again, we want to thank all of our public for being here today and or tonight and expressing your views. All right, members, Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the proposed ordinance amendment OA dash zero three dash two one to amend the Wake County Unified Development Ordinance. Mr. Tim Maloney, Planning Director, welcome, Mr. Tim.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Before you, as a staff, request to amend the Wake County UDO ordinance amendment O3 dash 21. The proposed amendment is a series of three distinct changes to the UDO, so I'm packaging them into one amendment in one public hearing before you tonight. This includes amending sections related to road names and road signs. Secondly, amending the use table as it relates to industrial zoning districts. And then lastly, amending the use table to remove residential highway commercial zoning district. So my approach to this is presenting each one separately, and then I'll pause after each segment if you have any questions, and then we'll get to the end with the staff and planning board recommendation. The First Amendment is to road names and road signs. When I talk about road signs in this context, I mean those pictured here on the slide, not stop signs or other traffic signs, those those types of signs are regulated by by DOT. So the purpose here is to amend the road names and road name signs section of the UDO to accomplish two things. First, to achieve consistency between the UDO and the county's emergency management ordinance, and secondly, to gain consistency with the county's current practice of posting these signs that you see pictured here. The county has standards for road name signs codified in two places, in our UDO, which is what we're talking about tonight, and in the emergency management ordinance. Upon reviewing the language in both, we discovered minor inconsistencies that need to be updated and clarified within the UDO. For example, the county does not post road name signs for dedicated or reserved right-of-way or unopened roads, so that language is is being removed or proposed to be removed from the UDO. Also, staff prefers the language in the emergency management ordinance as it pertains to road name signs, we're proposing to capture that language from the emergency management ordinance and bring it over into the UDO. And then lastly, we suggest adding a reference to the emergency management ordinance within the UDO. All these changes that I'm talking about here are described in detail in your packet. So to summarize the proposed amendments to this segment of the change, it creates consistency between the UDO and the emergency management ordinance. By reference, it connects the two ordinances. It aligns the UDO with the county's current practice of posting road name signs, and this change does not impact any existing land use, any development permit that we are currently reviewing, or anything that would come in in the future. So I'm going to pause here for any questions that you may have before I move on to the second portion of the amendment.
Questions, Commissioners? Okay.
Okay, I'll continue on. The Second Amendment is related to industrial zoning districts. The purpose is to amend certain uses allowed within industrial zoning districts. Industrial zoning districts, which are I-1 and I-2 in our use table, provide a wide range of manufacturing, warehousing, wholesaling, and outdoor storage activities. Standards within this district are designed to minimize impacts on the environment and help ensure visual compatibility with the surrounding area. A recent application for a land use permit prompted staff to look closer at the use table as it pertains to industrial zoning districts. Staff's review prompted the following amendments. First is to change all vehicle sales and service uses from requiring a special use permit to just which which requires a Board of Adjustment hearing and authorization from the Board of Adjustment to simply staff approval. This change would apply only in industrial use districts. We're proposing this because this type of use fits in with the character of other industrial type uses. We feel that having the Board of Adjustment step is an unnecessary step for this type of use, given the character of it and the other-like uses in that type of land use. Instead, these types of uses would simply require staff approval. We're also proposing the same change for mobile home sales. Again, a special use permit from the Board of Adjustment is currently required. We would just make this staff approval, again, just in industrial zoning districts. And then lastly, staff is proposing to remove daycare centers as a permitted as a permitted use in industrial zoning districts. We allow those right now. What we're proposing is to remove them. They would be prohibited. Many jurisdictions have learned in recent years that uses like daycares, hospitals, schools, nursing homes should not be near industrial type uses that might create hazardous situations. Again, these changes are detailed in your agenda packet, and I'll summarize these as such. It aligns vehicle sales uses with other uses of similar intensity that are permitted by right without a special use permit. It does the same for It does the same for mobile homes. It prohibits daycare uses from industrial zoning districts to alleviate any potential hazards. And lastly, this change does not impact any existing land use, development, or permit. Once again, I'll pause for any questions you have.
Yes. Vice Chair Thomas and then Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Good to see you. I just had a quick question about the daycares. Have we found that there have been issues with being close to industrial zoning areas? Have there been hazards or some sort of, something that has come up that, to make that an issue? And I ask that question because I think about, I also would want to know how far, like how large zoning zones are. I think about the convenience of families working in an industrial area, how far you might have to go for a daycare provider or for a nursing home for an older adult kind of thing. And so I'm just wondering what prompted this?
Really good question, Commissioner. Right now, there are no situations in Wake County's planning jurisdiction that propose a threat of any kind. As we're proposing here, we're removing daycares. We have no schools, we have no hospitals, we have no nursing care facilities in any industrial zoning and no daycares either. What we're doing is trying to alleviate any future possibilities. We are aware of situations at a municipal level where there have been instances in the past. There's what, there's a committee called the Local Emergency Planning Committee comprised of public emergency officials across Wake County. This is one of the recommendations that is born from that committee and proponing for local jurisdictions to go ahead and start prohibiting these types of uses so that when there are hazardous situations or incidents, they aren't having to deal with, how do they, they keep those types of uses safe when an incident does occur? In regards to Wake County's planning jurisdiction, we have very little industrial zoning. The reason for that is we don't have water and sewer availability in Wake County planning jurisdiction. So it's very difficult to locate industrial zoning. However, we do have it, we do have some of those uses, but we're not aware of, of any situations that could present a problem right now.
Thank you so much.
My question was probably answered by what you just said. I was going to ask if we currently do have daycare uses in these industrial zoning districts and if we'd be grandfathering any of those if they existed. But it sounds like in, in the Wake County planning jurisdiction, we don't currently have any of those, any daycare situations in our industrial zoning districts. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other, other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Saffan.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. In being forth, well, having the forethought, because I do sit on LEPC, and so we always talk about being more forward-thinking before a crisis occurs. So thank you so much on, on the point of taking daycares and other healthcare and facilities that have, you know, our children, our seniors. I do have a question more in practice. You have mentioned that there would be not a need for a board of adjustments to be part of the process anymore. What was the feedback from the board of adjustments to be taken out of, out of the approval process?
We, we did seek direct response from the board of adjustment. In fact, we avoid their input in situations related to the UDO as they are a quasi-judicial board and, but we do seek planning board feedback on this. And you will hear about their recommendation coming up from the planet, the vice chair who is here to join us tonight.
Other comments? Okay. Tim, back to you.
All right, I will continue on with the last item. The third amendment is related to residential highway commercial zoning districts. The purpose is to remove the residential highway commercial zoning district from the UDO. In 2006, the adopted UDO established the residential highway commercial zoning district to replace the existing highway zoning district. They're very similar zoning districts at that time and still remain so. Since then, there have been no resident or staff-initiated request to apply the residential highway commercial zoning district anywhere in Wake County, yet we have it in the UDO. The application of the RHC district in place of the existing highway district zoning no longer adds any value or benefit to it being in the UDO. Applying the RHC zoning district at this point actually would create some non-conforming uses, which we would rather avoid. So staff is proposing to remove the RHC zoning district from the use table and any references throughout the UDO, and there are many. Again, these changes are detailed in your packet. And to summarize, we are proposing to remove that district from the UDO because it provides no benefit. It does not create, by removing it, it does not create any non-conforming situation, meaning it hasn't been applied anywhere in the county. It simplifies the UDO and the use table by removing the district that's no longer, that's not even being used. And this change, once again, does not impact any existing land use development or permit. I will pause there for any questions you have on this segment.
Questions, Commissioners? Yeah, Dr. West.
Tim, just from my experience, my experience on the, on the board of adjustments, and you mentioned the quasi-judicial aspect of it, sometimes that can lead to some conflict because of the quasi-judicial nature. Do we have any potential for that kind of conflict in the county with the county board of adjustments and I guess, you know, elected individuals?
We do our best to, to avoid those conflicts. As you know, the county attorney's office represents the board of adjustments. They do a very good job at doing that and make sure those conflicts don't exist, and when they do, we bring them to light. One thing that we did a few years ago, which I think was a good move, was to move all quasi-judicial hearings to the board of adjustment. There was a time when the planning board would hear some quasi-judicial hearings, but we moved those all to the board of adjustment. In fact, there are some local jurisdictions where elected officials are the quasi-judicial board. We don't do that here. I think it's the right move to put it all to the board of adjustment. And with that, we can corral any conflicts of interest with one singular board.
Same as that, was a good move. Thank you. For your leadership, too.
Thank you, Dr. West. Other comments? Questions? Okay, Tim, I think we're good.
All right. Staff recommends that the Wake County Board of Commissioners adopt the text amendments as presented. And now I'm going to ask the vice chair of the planning board to come to the podium and just talk briefly about the board's approval. Mr. Asa Fleming.
Welcome, Asa.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
So on December 1st, at the meeting, the planning board meeting for Wake County, we unanimously approved that we recommend approval to the board of commissioners. There was some discussion, little to no debate, debate. And so we hope that you would approve this. I think the staff's done a great job, Tim, of explaining what's going on here with this. And there really are no issues or conflicts with the board.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Any questions or comments to the, the planning board from Commissioners? Okay, hearing none, then if there's no objection, we'll open the public comment. Okay, we'll open the public comment period. First, Ms. Giliard, let's go to you. Have we received any written or email comments?
We have not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Giliard. Is there anyone in the room tonight who would like to speak on this issue? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public comment period. Okay, comes back to the table. Tim or Mr. Fleming, any other comments before we move on? Okay, all right, Commissioners, it's, it's up to us for any discussion or questions of staff or the planning board first? Okay, hearing none in your materials, I believe there are two motions. Is that right, Mr. Attorney? Okay, so if it's the pleasure of this board, we'll then consider a motion, or motions.
Happy to make the motion.
Please, Commissioner Evans.
I move that the board of commissioners, having held a public hearing, adopts the draft statement finding that ordinance amendment OA dash zero three dash twenty one is consistent with the Wake County Comprehensive Plan and Wake County Unified Development Ordinance and is reasonable and in the public interest and adopts the attached resolution.
Great, thank you, Commissioners. A second?
Second.
Dr. West? Yeah, thank you, Dr. West. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Pass unanimously. Is there a second motion?
Yes. Also, move that the board of commissioners adopts the attached resolution to approve the proposed amendment to the Wake County Unified Development Ordinance as presented in ordinance amendment OA dash oh three dash twenty one.
There's motion on the floor, second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. West. Properly seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Pass unanimously. Thank you, Asa. Thank you, Tim. All right, Commissioners, we'll move on to item number 12, which is funding agreement for the town of Apex for the Apex West Greenway. Mr. Chris Snow, welcome, Chris.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Thanks for giving me a little bit of time to talk about two greenway projects tonight. The Apex West Greenway is the first of two that we'll be talking about tonight. The county has a 10-year-plus history of partnering with local municipalities on greenway trail design and construction. Our partnership thus far has included 12 projects with nine local municipalities totaling almost 26 miles of greenway trail. Until this year, we have always used our open space bond funds for these types of partnerships. But the 2018 Parks, Greenways, Recreation, and Open Space Bond that was passed dedicated $20 million to greenways in that issuance. Proceeding the bond, we developed the countywide greenway system plan, which kind of guides us or assists us in picking these greenway projects as they're, as they come forward from the, from the municipalities. So our partnership process starts with a request for proposals or an RFP process. And to tell you a little bit about that, our minimum match is 50/50. Of course, if a municipality proposes a better partnership, we're all in favor of that, but our minimum is 50/50. In the past, we have done design and construction and didn't really, didn't really distinguish between the two. Once the projects were submitted from the municipalities, staff reviewed them, that's staff from community services and facilities design and construction, and we would bring our recommendations to you for your approval. Once a project is approved, there's a funding agreement that's in place that actually allows us to participate financially with the municipality. And the municipality is the lead agency. They are managing the construction of these greenways. They are on, they are in for the long-term maintenance of these greenways. We are just there in an effort to get these kick-started across the county. Staff will go out and do site visits and, and look at the work that's done, and then we get pay apps, pay applications from the municipalities, and we pay 50% of the work completed, or the cost of 50% of the work completed. As I mentioned just a second ago, the 2018 P-Gross Bond dedicated $20 million for greenway development. Of that $20 million, $5 million was available in, for our last RFP in 2019. This RFP process, the results, we have, we had five municipalities submit eight projects. These eight projects, the total cost of these eight projects totaled $21 million. And the municipalities requested 6.7 million from us. So just to take a really quick step back, we had $5 million, we had requests for 6.7, so we couldn't fund everything that we got. But we brought our recommendations to you back in October of 2020 at Work Session, and basically there were, there were four recommendations that we made. The City of Raleigh's Crabtree Creek West Greenway, which connects the City of Raleigh's Greenway System to Unsted State Park. That project is under construction now. We recommended the Black Creek Greenway in Cary. That project was withdrawn from, by the, at the town's request. They decided that they also had sewer work that needed to be done in that corridor. They didn't want to build a greenway and then have to tear it up to do sewer work, so they, they withdrew their project. We did, however, pass the lease for them to be, or you passed the lease, for them to be on county property. Did that back in September. And so the two final projects that we recommended back in 2020 are these two projects with, with the town of Apex. So the Apex Green, Apex West Greenway would link the town of Apex's greenway system to the American Tobacco Trail. And for those of you who are not familiar with the American Tobacco Trail, basically runs from New Hill in western Wake County through Chatham County and to downtown Durham, right near the, the Durham Bulls Athletic Park. And so we manage part of that. The town of Cary manages part and Durham County manages part. Although this is a really short segment, like a tenth of a mile, it's a really important connection because it gets Apex to the American Tobacco Trail and thus Chatham County and Durham. So a very exciting connection. It's also complicated because the area of the trail that Apex wants to connect to, we don't own. We lease from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the federal government, and North Carolina Department of Transportation. And so the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, who owns the property, preferred that we request the connection. And we did, but we did not want to be responsible for the long-term maintenance of the connection. So there's, there's actually two parts to this partnership. There's the funding agreement, which would grant Apex $150,000 so they could construct the trail. And then there's a maintenance agreement that would allow the town to maintain this trail in perpetuity on county-managed property. So at this time, I am happy to answer any questions you have about the Apex West Greenway.
Questions, Commissioners? Looks like a great project. Do you want to talk about both of the projects and then?
They are distinct items with distinct actions.
Do you, two, two different items? Okay, so there's, then I'm, we will then, if there's no questions or comments, yes, vice chair?
All right, quick question. You were saying that it's complicated in the fact, in the maintenance aspect of it. Is this something that's happened before? Is this something that we've done before?
It is not something that we have done through, through the greenway process.
Okay.
We have situations where other entities, the town of Morrisville, for instance, operates a park on county-owned land at Cedar Fork, right behind Lake Crabtree. And so we, we've done that through an agreement very similar, but this is strictly a maintenance agreement that allows Apex, Apex to manage the trail.
Okay, thank you.
So we don't have to, basically?
Yes.
Right, okay. Other questions?
It's their connection.
Commissioner Saffan?
Yes. So in, in terms of that, you say that it's owned by D O, NCDOT and the Army Corps of Engineers, but there is not clarity on how Apex's relationship within, you were saying that we're going into an agreement with them in perpetuity, but what's their relationship with those other two entities in this?
So the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers owns the property as a part of the Jordan Lake Project. NCDOT has the rail corridor, and we have a relationship with both of them. The Corps of Engineers thought that it would be much simpler if we requested this connection rather than have to do a separate standalone agreement with the town of Apex just for this connection, which is on property that we manage. That's the kind of the convoluted or the complicated part. And so in, in talking, talking with the attorney's office, they agreed. And so we made the request from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for the connection, which they've approved. And while doing that, we did not want to be responsible long- which they've approved. And while doing that, we did not want to be responsible long-term for the maintenance of the trail. And so we pushed that back on Apex through this maintenance agreement.
Thank you for the clarity on that. That totally makes sense. And then, my other question's actually a little off, but you mentioned it, since I live in Cary. You said that you passed a lease for that property. Are you just, are we just waiting for town in Cary to do the, the work that they are going to do, and then we would keep going forward when it comes to the development of that greenway in the future?
I'm sorry.
When it comes to Black Creek?
Yes. So Apex, gosh, sorry. Cary was ready to do the project. Then their Public Works Department realized they had a lot of maintenance that they needed to do on the sewer line, and they're actually doing the maintenance right now. And so Cary withdrew the greenway project because, again, they didn't want to construct new trail and then potentially have to damage it with the maintenance on the greenway because they're in the same corridor on the ground. And so Cary is, and I feel sure likely to apply at the next RFP process for this. Yes.
Okay. Other questions? Is there a motion?
I'm happy to make the motion.
Yeah, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners authorizes the county manager to execute a funding agreement between Wake County and the town of Apex for the Apex West Greenway, subject to terms and conditions acceptable to the county attorney, and that the Board of Commissioners authorizes the county manager to execute a maintenance agreement between Wake County and the town of Apex for the Apex West Greenway, subject to terms and conditions acceptable to the county man, county attorney, excuse me.
Motion on the floor, is a second.
Second.
Second, Prime Commissioner Servania. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post no. Pass unanimously. Thank you, Chris. Is this Beaver Creek corridor?
Beaver, yes, that is Beaver Creek.
Okay, does it ultimately will go right into downtown Apex?
That's correct. If you noticed on the, the map that was in the presentation, there's a lot of solid green lines and solid, or dashed green lines. The dashed green line, some of that's under construction now, some of that's future construction. The solid green, I'll go back, sorry. The solid green is built on the ground now.
So the dotted green line is going to be built. It's designed and funded, and, you know, what's the status of all that?
So you'll notice it's in different segments, sections. Like most municipalities in Wake County, Apex has a, a, it's a part of their, I guess, similar to our UDO, where a lot of this is development-built.
Got it.
So as the developments, the subdivisions come in, they are actually constructing greenway on the ground.
Got it. Okay, it's very exciting. Thank you. The next project?
The next one is the Middle Creek, and I will apologize, these are the same background slides we just went over about the history and the partnership process and the 2019 RFP process. So I'll skip that from, from having to do this twice and just talk about the Middle Creek Greenway partnership. So it is one mile in length, and will connect the greenway system in Apex to the greenway system in Holly Springs.
Cool.
And it includes a trailhead and, at Sunset Lake Road, and also a pedestrian island in Sunset Lake Road. If, if you're familiar with Sunset Lake Road, you know it's busy. And so this would give people a safe place to get halfway across and then continue on. From Sunset Lake Road, it continues, the trail will continue north towards I-540, and the town is working with NCDOT and the complete I-540 project to get under. It will not be in a culvert. It is an open air, and so the road will, will go overhead, so you won't be in a culvert there, and continue north of the I-540 corridor with several connections to existing subdivisions and proposed subdivisions. In this, excuse me, in this item, we just have the funding agreement, which would grant the town $1.54 million on a just over $3 million project, so right at about 49% of, of the funding. And I'm happy to answer any questions on this one.
Questions, Commissioners? So that's, how does, how does Holly Springs and Apex feel about this?
I think both municipalities are very excited about this. We have had other conversations with them on the Middle Creek corridor and not just this small segment, but as it connects essentially downtown to downtown. And so I think this is a, a corridor that's important to both municipalities as far as regional connections and making the, that connectivity across the county.
Got it. And the same question as earlier, the, the dotted line, that's, what's the status of that dotted line?
So again, as with the Apex West, some of this is in design now. Some of this is going to be developer-built as the subdivisions come online. So they are, they are working to fill in the gaps.
Got it. Okay, thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'm happy to make the motion.
Please, whichever.
I move that the Board of Commissioners authorizes the county manager to execute a funding agreement between Wake County and the town of Apex for the Middle Creek Greenway, subject to terms and conditions acceptable to the county attorney.
Thank you. Commissioners, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post no. Pass unanimously. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate all your help. It's very exciting. All right, Commissioners, move on to item number 14, which is the Affordable Housing Loan Adjustment on Broadstone Walk in Apex, North Carolina. Alicia, welcome. Happy holidays.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
All right. So we're coming before you today to talk about an Apex development, not related to the greenways, but it's great to hear and see the greenways get expanded. And this is a development that has been hit hard by COVID, as have many of our other development partners in the affordable housing world. So Broadstone Walk was an apartment complex that was proposed to the county and to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency for low-income housing tax credits for a 9% project in both 2019 and 2020. Unfortunately, it was not approved in that highly competitive process for those years, so they came back in the 2020 extended cycle and proposed a 4% tax credit development. The original 9% development was going to be a two-phase project. They combined both phases and came back with the 4% request. This project was ultimately approved for low-income housing tax credits by the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency in January of 2021. We, in that process, committed $3 million in gap financing for that, and the town of Apex contributed or committed $1 million in gap financing for that project. The project, just as an overview, is by DHIC, one of our longstanding development partners. It's located in Apex and is 164 units. Those units are at 40%, 50%, and 60% of the area median income. It's targeted towards families, and our financing terms were for 30%, or 30 years at 1% with a balloon payment, and it had about 22% of the units, or 36 units, that would be devoted to permanent supportive housing. In late September of last year, DHIC notified both the town and the county that there was a need for an additional $1.5 million in gap financing. This was due to the increased construction pricing, a lot of it due to the pandemic, investor requirements that they discontinued the income averaging due to some treasury policies that are still unclear and needing to be clarified. There was also a decrease in tax credit equity pricing, and there was an increase for first mortgage interest rate. And so oftentimes, we see some of these things happen between when these projects are approved and when they actually come to fruition. But I think just given everything going on in the financial market and the economic market, these are things that, that couldn't be mitigated with the existing financing that they had in place. So on October 6, they went to the town of Apex and requested $1 million from the 1.5 million gap, and then on October 8, DHIC requested the remaining half a million from the county. And so we are here before you today to request approval for the half a million, original request from DHIC back on October 8, and we are really invested in making sure that this project comes to fruition. We are excited that there is an affordable complex being built in Apex, and as you can see, we've been working on this for a very long time. So this is just more of a formality to kind of explain what's going on and, and request additional support. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Commissioner Evans?
Well, thank you for being here and talking about this, and I, too, just want to say it's been quite a journey to get us to this point. And as a 30-year resident of Apex, I want to make sure the community understands the need. The need is there. And, but one of the reasons, if I understand it correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Arnold, is that one of the reasons we had the difficulty getting this project to qualify initially for the 9% credits is because the land pricing in that area kind of pushes the dollar amounts up in terms of how much financing is needed related to the number of units, and so it ends up not looking so attractive to the Housing Finance Agency. But it's really, really important. You know, we have residents in, in the Apex area that have lived there their whole life, who are now experiencing gentrification and so forth, and we're in a desperate need for workforce housing and, and all of those things. So I just wanted to start by highlighting that. And so, but, but to talk about the additional asked from DHIC now regarding the additional 1.5 million, it is, would be your opinion that this is a valid request, that the needs are real based on the things that are happening in the finance market and, and construction cost and labor shortage and all those things? So we, we agree that it's a valid issue that they are facing, and we certainly want to see this project move forward. We have received correspondence from the town of Apex, which you are aware, that even though one of their staff members did initially communicate to DHIC that they could fund a million dollars for the additional gap money, they are, the town council and the mayor have now expressed some concern about that, that that would be very difficult for them, and they don't even have that much money in their housing fund, and it would cause, their affordable housing fund, and might cause them to have to take funds from elsewhere. So they've asked us to reconsider whether we could give more than the $500,000 for this additional funding. I'm certainly in favor of approving the $500, $500,000 request, you know, today to get this project, keep it on track. But just wanted to know, is there any possibility for us to continue talking about whether we can assist with any additional financing, or where, has our staff had conversations with the town of Apex about this, and where do those discussions stand?
Sure. We have had several conversations with the town of Apex staff, and I believe really the conversations are between us being able to provide the town of Apex staff information about what our current commitments are, our future commitments are around affordable housing, what our projected commitments will be with additional projects that are coming up in the future. We provided some information in emails back and forth before the holiday for the Apex staff to go back, and their plan as of our most recent communication was to go back to their next board meeting with the full million-dollar request and utilizing some of that justification. I believe their staff have, has submitted scenarios that, that show how they would propose to come up with that million dollar in funding, and so I wouldn't want to speculate on their finances without, without knowing and, and being able to see that. But I think that's part of, of their negotiation, that we've just tried to provide as much information to support Apex staff on and stay in tune and really understand what's going on. So the, the lines of communication continue to be open. This is based off the request that we had in front of us and, and our understanding of, of the request and the agreement that was currently pending, so that's.
That's great information. So, yeah, I just wanted to know that we've been in conversation, and, and, you know, I certainly understand the perspective that we, as the county, are trying to fund as many projects with gap financing all across the county as we possibly can. And so we have a lot of demands on our funding, and I certainly acknowledge that, and, and I'm not trying to look at this in a vacuum, but the better we can communicate all of that to them. But the other thing that's important that I wanted to highlight, and the reason I wanted to make sure we're, you know, still talking about possibilities is that, you know, in my opinion, Apex has really been the first suburban municipality that's really stepped up in any big way to try to partner in, in, in bringing affordable housing to their community. You know, we have the town, the city of Raleigh doing plenty of things, but in terms of our suburban community, you know, they have increased taxes, they have, you know, started an affordable housing fund. As their mayor said in the letter to us, they're all in on affordable housing. And so with this first project, it's so critically important that we're, we're just good partners because we want to nurture that relationship. And then one of the other things that has been mentioned is whether or not we should consider sort of laying out a policy for a guideline for when we're, when we are working with the municipalities, what type of proportional relationship might be expected and so forth and so on. Is that something that the staff has talked about at all? Or I think that would be worth us discussing at some point in time, so I also wanted to mention that. So with that being said, I know I rambled a lot, but I just, I just think this is so critically important that we, you know, are good partners on this and that we all work together to find the best possible solutions. But I certainly am in favor of approving the $500,000 request at this time, and appreciate the staff's efforts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Evans. Vice Chair Thomas?
Thank you. So Alicia, am I correct, and this is a request from DHIC for $500,000, not from the town of Apex? It's for the town of Apex project, but it's, the request is from DHIC?
Correct.
To fill this. Okay. And then, so to Commissioner Evans' point about the additional funds and the conversations that have been had around the additional funds, would us giving or approving this $500,000 give DHIC or the town of Apex or anybody else the opportunity to say, I can fill that funding, or for, really, DHIC to look for additional funding to make up that million if Apex cannot, or if their board decides that they cannot?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's really, I'm, I'm just thinking about the, and, and I, I totally agree with Commissioner Evans that this is, this is important, and it's important to be a good partner and to do this work in good faith with the town of Apex. I'm just concerned about, I look at how much we've done for affordable housing over these past two years, year, I guess, and also what we have in the pipeline and what that looks like, and understanding, too, that costs, material costs are going up. So this is not going to be the only project that's going to come to us and, and need additional funding. And so I'm just trying to determine if there are potentially other opportunities for the gap funding, where, where the gap funding can come from. Maybe something, I mean, I don't know. Just thinking, is that a possibility based on, if DHIC says, yes, okay, they're going to get this much money from the county, and the town of Apex says, well, we can't fill it, does DHIC have other opportunities to look for funding other places, right, so that we can continue, essentially, at least for now, the pipeline of projects that we have coming along? So that's just what I'm, what I'm trying to determine, I guess.
Yeah, I think just as we've worked really hard with Apex to try to give them as much information and data that we can, we will do absolutely the same with DHIC and have done that with DHIC of exploring all opportunities to make this project feasible and really doing our absolute best to underwrite everything and make sure that we are leveraging our dollars as effectively as possible. So we'll, we're happy to continue to keep the communication lines open with both, and we agree that, you know, the town of Apex and their staff that they have there, as well as DHIC, are really great partners. So we're looking forward to continuing to work with them and hope. So we're looking forward to continuing to work with them and hope that, you know, this is the first, but definitely not the last, project that we'll have over there.
Thank you.
Dr. West.
Alicia, I'm trying to get a good accurate picture of this reality. And number one, I think the project also sends some symbolism because, as was said by Commissioner Evans, certainly, I know going back 20-plus years ago, we were working on affordable housing, had an affordable housing plan for the city of Raleigh, and the county participated in it. It has been uphill. So I feel that, from that perspective, that we need, as has been said, to make sure that we keep all options open and look at how we can make this happen. But I guess my question is, seeing as though we are talking about other options, do we have some options in the toolbox as we collaborate and try to find other sources? Are there some options to do that? I mean, working with DHIC, Apex, and, you know, all the partners?
Yeah, I think there's several things that are in the pipeline that could come down that potentially may be able to assist. There may be other areas that DHIC, as the developer, could look at that could be identified as well, you know, the loan product type or other available funding sources. You know, the Housing Finance Agency is talking about people being able to turn their credits in and get different, you know, get more credits because of some of the costs and mitigating those costs. So I think there's some things out there to keep the project on track and keep it fairly, you know, in line with it going on. I think the best course of action is to go kind of what DHIC has recommended or has requested. But as far as that, you know, I can speak to the fact that the 1.5 million gap that they have identified from the performer that they sent us is a true gap. And we've done everything we can, from an underwriting standpoint, to look at anything that could help to mitigate that gap. And it is an accurate gap. And, you know, it's really up to the developer and the conversations that they have with their funding partners to be able to make requests based off of what they think is achievable and have those requests, you know, approved. And so we're going with what we've been requested from the development partner at this point in time. And I think that's, you know, that's our preferred and DHIC's preferred route to go.
Would it be fair to say that, I know there are other affordable housing builders, but I know DHIC has been one probably 25, 30 years ago. Because back around 20-some years ago, the city of Raleigh allocated $100,000, I guess, to try to help to propel and help the whole affordable housing issue, which is more needed than ever before. So I think that we should do everything that we can. I remember, I don't know whether I got the exact right memory, but looking at DHIC and the scope and the percentage that it contributes to affordable housing, I remember back one time the request was made. And that would be looking more, I guess, as something that already exists. But a request they made for refinancing and looking at DHIC's from a big point of view, looking at the whole and the mere fact that I truly believe that they are a major driver in this process. I don't know how that refinancing and all that in DHIC's portfolio and how it fits together, but I do know that they need to be physical, strong. So I'm just saying this, that if we get out of the box, we probably can find some options. Is that a fair statement?
I think we're happy to look at anything, you know, that they would propose or that others may be doing that's innovative to try to help them out.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. West. Yes, Commissioner Savanya.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. And my colleagues actually took some of my thoughts, but I'm going to expand it a little bit more. Yeah, I think that we definitely should be working with DHIC, definitely. I know that you've been very good with Apex and scenarios, but DHIC needs to be part of the scenarios, too, because they are requesting the money. Going on with Commissioner West's statement in that you mentioned loan product type and differentiation, right? And the other things that have increased are also property value. So he touched upon refinancing, and I'm wondering if that's like a potential income source because probably that land, when we bought it or whomever bought it, is a lot less than what it is worth now. So, you know, that's all, like, I know it as a personal way, but I don't know if that works when it comes to LIHTC or the funding sources that we have. But thank you for continuing to be innovative and trying to find another way, in other ways, to bridge these gaps, not only in this project, but probably potentially a lot of our other ones, too.
Absolutely.
Other questions, commissioners? I think you're hearing, Ms. Arnold, the interest of this board to get this project done. This is 164 units, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and just perfect in terms of the type of folks we're trying to serve. And over the last three years, the number of units this commission in this county has created is, what was it, 2,500?
Yep, 2,507.
2,507. And I mean, right. But who's counting, right?
Count them all.
Everyone counts. That's right. Every unit.
Everyone helps, right, Dr. West? That's right. All right. Any other comments, commissioners? All right, we'd love to take a motion then.
I'll make a motion.
Please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approves up to $500,000 in additional financing for the development of Broadstone Walk Apartments and affordable family housing development to be located in Apex, North Carolina. All funding commitments are subject to terms and conditions acceptable to the county attorney. Awards are also contingent upon the development, receiving local approvals, including site plan approval and all necessary permits from the local municipality. In addition, all awards are contingent upon the basic terms as identified in the project descriptions.
I'll second.
I've moved, and properly seconded any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Post no. Pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Very exciting. All right, commissioners, next item, we're moving on to appointments. Let me turn it over to our vice chair, Vice Chair Thomas.
Thank you so much. So we have several appointments for this month. And before I read them, I just want to note that we do have Human Services, the Human Services Board listed, but I would ask Mr. Chair that we move that to February. There are some questions still for staff when it comes to the Human Services Board and those appointments.
Please. Let's go. Is that all right, Dr. West, for you?
Yes, most definitely.
Okay. The appointments are as follows. For the Go Triangle Transit Citizen Advisory Committee, there are six vacancies and six reappointments. The reappointments are Satish Garamella, Jerome Brown, Gabe Talton, Donna Friend, Daniel Coleman, and Tulipe Amakeye. The Housing Authority has four vacancies and four reappointments of Kima Shaw, Patricia Page, John Austin, and Thomas Gulisiano. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council has 12 vacancies, six reappointments consisting of Carla Huff, Marius Pettiford, Kimberly Newsom, Eric Johnson, Lori Christian, and Ann Goodwin. One reappointment recommendation by myself of Wayne Wallace to fill a member-at-large vacancy seat, and one appointment recommendation by JCPC of Mary Ellen Anderson to also fill a member-at-large vacancy seat. The Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee has one vacancy and one reappointment of Megan Douglas. The United Arts Grants Panel has two vacancies. One vacancy is a resignation. It's from District 1. Yolanda Raven has resigned. She currently serves on the United Arts Grants Panel Board of Directors, and therefore she must resign membership on the Grants Panel Advisory Board. There's also a vacancy resulting from a previous member resignation, Lacy Senko, from District 4. The Wake County Board of Adjustment has one vacancy. That one vacancy is resulting from a member resignation of Sharie Vodka. It's a District 7 seat. The Wake County Fire Commission has one vacancy, one appointment recommendation, Jason Joyner, serving as the Town of Wendell Recommendation. The Wake County Water Partnership has four vacancies, one resignation of Robert Kruger, who's a water, private water provider. The other four vacancies are a Fuquay Marina seat representative, a Knightdale seat representative, a Wake Forest seat representative, and the private water provider. These are all the vacancies for January. We have several upcoming vacancies for February. The Holly Springs Board of Adjustment has one vacancy. The Knightdale Land Use Review Board has one vacancy. The Open Space and Park Advisory Committee has three vacancies. And the Wake County Planning Board has six vacancies. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. So the motion on the.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, before you make that motion over here. Did you read Wake County Planning Board, please?
The Wake County Planning Board for February? Oh, I'm sorry. The Wake County Planning Board does not have any vacancies for January. That is for February. I'm sorry. That was a misprint on the original agenda.
And so there are some that are up for approval?
In February.
In February. Okay, so is there any action for tonight?
Not for January.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Chair. All right, members, then we'll move on to other business and open it up to commissioners who have any information or items that they want to present.
I need an approval for those as read.
Oh, for the ones that are, that have been mentioned. Okay, so is there a second on the appointments?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
I guess I have, if it's appropriate, voluntarily. I was at the recent Go Triangle Citizen Advisory Committee, and they're doing some fantastic work, their report to Go Triangle Board. And something came up about the terms, and we are really struggling because we need the individuals that are already on there to continue. But I just wanted to make sure that it's because the board makes this final decision. What we were just discussing related to the three-county Go Triangle Citizen Advisor Group, that would be the ones that we recommend. Then Go Triangle recommends a smaller group, the whole consortium. But is what we've just done, we've just done, put those individuals back on? I definitely think they need Jerome Brown right now because they're really moving. Yeah, okay.
Yes, Dr. West, those six reappointments, those six reappointments are, do include the people that you have suggested. Jerome Brown is one.
Yeah, I saw the names. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't do something that wasn't consistent with, you know, the protocol. So that's great, yes.
You're good?
Yeah, I'm real good.
Okay, all right, so there's a motion on the floor, properly seconded for the appointments that are up in January. All right, hearing none, no more discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Post no. As is unanimously. Good. Ms. Gilliard, you happy?
Yes, I'm happy.
There we go. We're rocking and rolling. All right, next item is other business. Now we move on to other business. Commissioners, let's open it up for any good news that you might have. Commissioner Savanya.
Actually, I wanted to, probably not properly, but address Mr. Olivera. I want to assure you that David Ellis, our county manager, and I and staff and our commissioners have been having these conversations when it comes to language access, including Spanish, including translation. And like, I have been a broken record on every one of these meetings about Google Translate is not appropriate way to translate, that we should have dedicated certified people to have our translations be correct and robust and serve our community. So I thank you that you stayed for our whole meeting. But rest assured, and I want you to feel free to contact me in talking about this more specifically, but please feel reassured that we are having these conversations.
Yeah, and just Commissioner Savanya, thank you for those comments. And I was thinking about you during, Mr., pronounce your name for me, sir. Okay, very good, sir. Thank you. I did not want to get it wrong, so I appreciate that. We appreciate you being here. Yes, Vice Chair.
Thank you for those comments, Commissioner Savanya. Yes, we have taken this up in the Great Government Committee, and we will continue to discuss it this year and bring recommendations to the full board. So I appreciate you coming and making the public comment as well and reinforcing the work that we are trying to do.
Thank you, commissioners. Other comments?
Mr. Hudson, I just wanted to make a very quick comment. Observing from a distance, the process that we use to identify our boards of commissions and the leadership for our strategic initiative was extremely well done. And I think the changes that were made will help us to be more efficient and effective and achieve the outcomes that we're working toward.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments, Dr. West. Any other comments from commissioners? All right, hearing none, then we move on to a closed session. Mr. Attorney, do we have a closed session today?
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Any other business? Mr. Manager, you good? Please.
So, thank you. Just want to make a quick announcement. We've been following the weather. Daryl Alford, our Emergency Management Director, has contacted me, and we have a lot of concerns about tomorrow morning and black ISO. I will be delaying the opening of the county till 10 o'clock tomorrow.
Very good, sir. Thank you. So noted. Any other comments? Okay, so let me just say before we adjourn that how much we appreciate everyone being here tonight and watching this online. We have got a great county and a great Board of Commission who are working very, very hard to make sure that all our citizens are taken care of and safe and healthy and thriving. So that being said, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, January 18th at 2:00 p.m. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.